Good evening, good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Kansas City Public School Board of Directors for June 22nd, 2022. This meeting is called the order. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca, Ms. Buckner.
Here.
Ms. Cortez.
Present.
Ms. Ford. Dr. Jones.
Present.
Ms. Wolfsee.
Here.
Mr. Hogan.
Here, thank you, June. All right, is there a quick motion to include the fiscal year 2022 budget amendment to the agenda tonight?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner.
Yes.
Ms. Cortez.
Yes.
Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, the motion passes. All right, June, will you do a quick review of action items?
I will. Two action items were sent in last week's Friday update. Hit my page. The action item on literacy data and literacy pre-K data will be included in the Friday update this week along with the, a statement regarding the enrollment process. There are two items that deal with surveys and information from summer school that will be delivered to the board after summer school when the data is available in July.
All right, Dr. Bedell, anything to add on those? Okay. All right, well, with that being said, we'll move right into public comment, and I think we have two guests tonight. We'll start with Mr. Skip Hill. Hello, sir. I'm good. Welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I'd like the board to consider a proposal for the creation of a swimming program that would result in the, in the creation of an actual swim team. This would be developed through teaching a 45-minute class three days a week, three hours during the school day, which would include transportation of students from the surrounding three elementary schools or middle schools that would populate Central High School. Central High School being selected only because you simply, you have the facility. Just give me a little amendment to give, a little, a brief pre-speech here. I'm actually here representing, I'm a swimming coach for a company called Kansas City Swim Academy. The academy is owned by Mary Jo Clear, a former Olympian, and Bonnie Boils, who have been in teaching and coaching swimming at every level from infancy to all the way to the Olympics over the past 30 years. My own history is that, or since the history of swimming in general, that we all know the planet is three quarters water. We all know that water provides energy and jobs. In order to enjoy the benefit, we all must be trained properly. Until we produce coaches, certified coaches, we will not produce winning swimmers. My own personal history, I have been employed for the past 20 years in the world of aquatics after a 15-year history of the, being in the hotel industry and management and catering. And previous to that, being a family member of a well-known restaurant here in the Kansas City area. 20 years ago, I joined KC Park and Rec as a lifeguard. I was assigned to Leonard Horn, a coach who, I believe, part of the school district, but who had a partnering with the Kansas City Park and Rec. They created this team called the Storm. My daughter, along with other notables, swam on that swim team and were doing quite well. That swim team program was canceled. Not to say that I want to recreate the wheel, but I simply want to redo what Coach Horn had initially started, but in a much more detailed manner. Coach Horn simply took athletes who were wanting to swim in the after-school hours and put them through a competitive swimming program. My approach is a little differently. I'm picking up the approach that was made by the gentleman, Mr. Jim Davis, who was featured in the movie Pride that was starred by Terrence, Terrence, can't think of his last name. But he was an African-American coach who took a swim program from nothing in the city of Philadelphia and took them to a record-breaking level. That ability could be done here if we had the services and the resources. African-American boys between the ages of six and 16 are the highest incident of drowning victims in America today as recorded by Red Cross. KCPS has the facility. You have the information and the data, the transportation costs. You know what schools will be open and what schools will not be open. I do not have that information, but I have written a 26-page proposal to show you how to teach swimming at both the beginning, intermediate, and advanced level to then create a swim team from those best showing that their prowess in the world of swimming.
All right, Mr. Hill, I'm sorry your time is up, sir.
Time is up.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, now we'll call to the podium, Mr. Tom Love. Mr. Love, welcome.
Hey, thank you.
I think you know you'll have three minutes.
All right, so I'm still concerned about the Title I complaint I filed April the 26th. According to the school board policy, I'm supposed to get a response within five days, and I got something today. But it doesn't say, it doesn't say how many reading interventionists there are in the district. It just says, it lists some of the different people that are hired and the money spent, reading interventionists, math interventionists, before and after-school targeted tutoring, Tier Two resources for small group instruction, additional training for teachers, parent community liaisons, restorative justice coordinators, and instructional paraprofessionals. So I found out several years ago, there were like 30-some instructional coaches in the district, and there wasn't any reading specialist, none. If they went to Alatha Schools, Alatha Public Schools, where they have 10 Title I schools, those students would have received 540 hours of instruction from a master's degree reading specialist. The children here were getting zero. There wasn't one reading specialist in any of the elementary schools. The same thing is true for St. Louis as of last year. They have instructional coaches, but they're not, they're not trained to teach reading to the teachers. So the classroom, the actual instructional coaches, I mean, the reading specialists can go in one day a week and mentor all the K through second grade students, teachers. That's, that's a real instructional coach that can make a huge difference. 30% of our students were going into fourth grade at first grade reading level or below. We were breaking until last year a law that was passed 20 years ago that required those students to be taught reading and be tutored, a minimum, a minimum of 70 hours. We weren't complying with it. It took a year of school board meetings to get us to comply. It was really sad. I don't understand it. I, it's, it's hard to comprehend, but I was, I went to a meeting where the state took over a district in St. Louis, Normandy School District, and the superintendent was hanging his head. It was the last day for him to be there. And he was a young black man, well-dressed, super nice guy, and his shoulders are down, and he says, "I looked all over the country for a black urban district turnaround example, and he couldn't find one." But was he looking for a successful district that could literally be across a street called State Line Road? Why not provide the reading help? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love. All right, Dr. Bedell, we'll turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
All right, um, well, no, you.
I had it marked off on my agenda, apologies. It sounds like we will not have the DAC report tonight. Ms. Angie Lyle will not be able to make it, so we will turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we will move into our video highlight, which will be an overview of our commencement, so we should be ready to run that.
But know that you have made that difference and know that you can change our community, change our city, and you can help rebuild us every part of our city, block by block. I am so proud of what you have done, but as I started with, I'm prouder of where you are going. I see presidents, business people, teachers, lawyers, doctors, game changers, preachers, folks that are making a world of difference for us.
This is the first graduating class since 2000 to graduate in a fully accredited Kansas City Public School District. We believe in developing well-rounded children who will be able to function in this society at a high level. By the power vested in me, I hereby declare the class of 2022 to be graduates of Central High School. To be graduates of East High School. Be graduates of Lincoln College Preparatory Academy. Graduates of Fisayo Academy of Fine and Performing Arts. Hereby declare Northeast High School students 2022 graduates. Be graduates of Southeast High School. Focus on treating people with love and compassion. This world is absent of it right now, and we need you all to be the changemakers.
At this time, move your tassels from the right to the left. Yeah, we did it. We did it.
Class of 2022, at this time, you may all turn your tassels.
All right, thank you, our communications team for putting that together, and also to all of our board members who participated throughout the duration of that week, along with many of our staff members in here. The next update under the superintendent's report is our marketing update, and we will bring Lynn up, Go Ring, who will take us through this update. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Dr. Bedell, Board Chair Hogan, esteemed board members. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight's marketing update. All right, just kind of giving a little bit of a previous context. Previously, we've talked about Holdsworth, their enrollment marketing campaign plan. We've talked a little bit about Blueprint 2030 and Summer Academy support. Now, looking currently, this is a full list of what we've accomplished utilizing Holdworth's, Holdworth's Communications recommendations. What's listed is what has been completed or is in process currently. Three things I do want to bring to your attention right here on this slide is that our new section, which has been a big piece, is in process. We've actually worked with the vendor. We've got the layout worked out with our current brand, look and feel with the website and our template. In addition, we've worked through the colors, the branding, all those pieces. Now we're working on the contract piece. The individual website pages for our schools are in process. We've requested principals review their websites and provide changes by the end of July with the goal of having all websites updated by the start of school. And of course, as they have additional changes, we will make those as they go along. Last on this page, I want to point out our new mover postcard. We launched this earlier in the school year, earlier in the year, actually, about February. And since then, we've had some more, some less, but we're averaging 1,350 new postcards going out to our new movers within the area. The cool thing, I have one in my hand, the cool thing about that is it's going to everybody who's moving within the district. And we have had, we know it's working because our student recruiters received a few phone calls off of it. On this slide, we're going to talk about neighborhood marketing. That's been a key focus for us as we were moving into the summer. We have our postcard campaigns in process. One of the things that we've requested from our principals, along with the website updates, is our back-to-school dates, including open houses, orientation, school tour dates, et cetera, all the fun things. And as those are coming in, we're populating that information and not only sharing it to the new students in their, their school and the existing students, but also the surrounding community. We have an example of Trailwoods. They were the first ones to get the job done, and it's actually already went out to print, and then, and we've received it in the mail. Also, rolling right into that is new student welcome kit. Originally, we had put this together for our principals to put, put and communicate with our, with our new students. But what we're doing this summer is actually running that for them. We're finding our principals are really busy, so we want to make sure that that information actually gets out. And it's going not only to our new students, but also to our existing students to let them know, hey, we've got, we want you to come back, welcome, and it's kind of a little bit of a retention effort as well. Currently, also, we have Blueprint 2030. If you happen to go to May 23rd or May 24th at J Rogers or Carver, you would have seen we had a lot of families come and participate. So much so, we actually had 123 participants in those two opportunities. So what we did a little bit differently this time is that we hosted a kids' performance beforehand. So the kids performed, the parents stayed, the kids went off afterwards, had dinner, had fun, and the parents gave us some really, really good feedback. In addition, we've launched our Blueprint 2030 virtual experience, and that's up currently, and that will remain open through July 4th. Talking about Summer Academy, Summer School, we've supported that with the usual social media, emails, postcards, et cetera. Now, let's look to the future. And along with continuing on, working through the recommendations that Holdsworth put forth, a couple big pieces I want to point out is that we have the 2022 Enrollment Fair coming up July 18th through 20th at Manual. We're working closely with the admissions and enrollment department to make sure that we're actively promoting that. The initial marketing and communication plan is already in process. We're meeting to finalize that at the end of the week, and we'll be rolling that out at the beginning of July. We're meeting to finalize that at the end of the week, and we'll be rolling that out at the beginning of July. Also, family engagement liaisons in each school, since that has been fully funded, and they are working through getting everyone hired. Courtney, our family engagement person, is working on building a plan out for that. Successes now. So obviously, we have good things happening with Blueprint 2030. But a couple of things I do want to point out is our latest edition of Our Voice is off to print and should drop in the mail in early next week. It's actually our senior edition. And I'm really excited about this piece because we highlight seven seniors around the district. So one of each high school, and we actually highlight two young ladies from Northeast who've overcome some pretty big barriers to do amazing things. In addition, I want to talk about recruiting. As we've talked about at previous meetings, recruiting is a big piece for us. We're trying really to be diligent and being purposeful and strategic to utilize our time and resources wisely. One of the big pieces is Operation Breakthrough. That is a huge partnership for us, not only because we have pre-K co-op classes there, but also because they have so many kids that come in, and we want to build good, solid relationships with them. So again, Tenoa, our student recruiter, she has been working not only with the student, the advocates and the teachers there, but she's also been working with the families. So at this time, since January, she's actually worked and got 52 confirmed enrolled students from our pre-K and co-op classes. That's out of 80 seats, so that's 65% enrollment rate at this point in time. In addition, she's working meetings. She's doing, she's working her Tenoa charm, so she's actually managed to capture additional families that aren't part of the pre-K co-op class, but are within the Operation Breakthrough families. She's also been working diligently with those families who may have not finished the enrollment process through Infinite Campus to help them get through that process. And so she's, she has an additional 45 confirmed enrollment, enrollment in different, in different schools. And as she's out and about in the area, whether she's doing a community fair or pop in the parks or whatever, she's had 55 personal applications. So that's her out and about in the recruiting, and 30 of those 55 have completed enrollment. So with that being said, since just January, Tenoa's worked with, we've lost count of how many families, but she's secured 127 enrollments within our KCPS schools. So really big, big shout out to her there. And of course, I like to talk about online metrics because that's me. We went through and looked at our website, and in the month of May, we had well over 500,000 webpage views. In May 21, we had around 270,000. So not quite double, but a really big change from last year to this year. In addition, we continue to measure our social media, and we increased from May, Facebook by six percent, 6%, excuse me, YouTube by almost 10% and over 12% for Instagram. One last success I kind of want to talk about, it came in at the late last part of last week. You might have seen it in the Friday update. But I actually received the National School Public Relations Association 2022 Golden Achievement Award. So for our department or our profession, that's one of the highest awards that you could possibly get. And I'm really excited because that was for our Focus School Campaign, which we've seen some really good work and good metrics from that perspective. Some super excited from that perspective. And as a result, I actually was invited to present at the national conference next year, or next month, excuse me, next month in Chicago. But wait, there's more. We actually entered six other additional pieces, and of those six pieces, all six of them won national awards as well, from our website, to the magazine, one of our commercials, some marketing material, et cetera. So really excited from that perspective. Thank you. So timeline and action plan, we're going to continue working through those, those Holdsworth recommendations. We're also already working through the marketing and communication plan. First up, neighborhood school marketing, we're really hitting that hard this summer, making sure that we're driving enrollment to our neighborhood schools and really pushing that piece of it. Once that school starts, we will roll into focus marketing, our focus school campaigns. And then whenever we get close to enrollment opening, we'll start with enrollment and signature school campaigns, and then continue on with our different campaigns. In addition, again, I mentioned family liaisons. We're still pushing forward on that, making, Courtney is working on putting together a plan. And I mentioned a little bit of student recruiting. I want to follow up with a little bit more student recruiting. The season kicked off at the end of, end of May after schools ended. And Tenoa has been extremely busy since it started. So we have poppin' in the parks, which has been, we're again, being strategic, hitting those places where we get to engage with families. But new this year is she's worked her magic, and we are meeting at community centers during summer camps. So during drop-off and pickups, she's meeting with families, whether it's Brush Creek, Westport, Southeast, et cetera. She's out there working with families. How you doing? What's your plan for fall? Do you need help? And just not so much always pushing the enrollment piece, but being there as a resource because that's a really key piece that we need for our families. And last but not least, we have Operation Breakthrough in Emmanuel Family Center. We're continuing with that, and then also continuing with our individual community fairs, Juneteenth, Hyde Park, things along that lines. And last but not least, barriers. We have some openings in our department. So we have folks that are retiring, folks that have left, so we have some places that we need to fill. And that is it. I'm pretty sure I'm under my 20 minutes. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Congrats again on the awards. That's really cool. Questions? Ms. Cortez.
So thank you for sharing the, the kind of the direct engagement with the families at Operation Breakthrough in Emmanuel. Are we taking that same strategy internally with our pre-K families?
I'm very happy you asked. Yes, actually, we have went through, Julia Went has been, and her team has been instrumental in making sure that we're working hand in hand with each other. And so we have been there to, with the pre-K classes, to make sure that those pre-K kids are continuing through with KCPS. And then for all of our Head Start students, we've been met with all of the Head Start families that are transitioning from P4 up to KCPS. And I don't have the exact numbers, but I can, I can see if I can get those for you. And we've worked really diligently to make sure those kids stay internal as well. Our original goal was 75%. We actually hit that last year of keeping those kids Head Start-wise, moving into KCPS schools. Our goal this year was 85%. I'd have to check with Michelle and Tenoa to see where we're at on that.
Sorry, Ms. Buckner.
Hi, thank you for sharing that. So I'll just speak from my own experience having a pre-K kiddo with KCPS and some phone calls that I received. There has, I'm wondering about the internal communication with staff. There has been conflicting information, depending on who folks talk to about enrollment for pre-K and where the sites are and the process for enrollment. What has communication, internal communication of the processes been like? Has there been a change or refinement? What does that look like?
That's actually a really good question. I don't have the specifics. I know we've made some adjustments as some of our policies have adjusted, like the pre-K from P3 to P4 have rolled up. So that kind of changed this year. I can see what our processes are and get back to you in the Friday report, if that's okay?
Yes. Specifically, I'm asking for internal communication, like how it is communicated to staff about the enrollment process. Is it just folks who are working at enrollment fairs that get direct information about this? I know there's conflicting information coming from different schools. You know, with whoever is, you know, answering the phone, there might be different information. So I just want to make sure that the communication is streamlined. So if we can get information on that, that'd be great.
Yes, ma'am. I got a big note. Thank you.
Ms. Full C.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
On the award to you and your team. I know that's usually a team effort. On the current status, I have a question. I know we're in, working on updating the individual school pages, and you said complete by the start of school, and if memory serves me, that's August 22nd. So my question would be, is it possible that could maybe be moved up only because parents really look at those pages prior to the first day of school a lot?
Yes, ma'am.
They're really digging in because they're like, what, what's the, you know?
What's the plan?
Yeah, just, I know from experience.
Yes, absolutely. I totally agree as a, as a mom myself. Wholeheartedly. Actually, as updates are being received, we're updating them. So we're, the goal is by the start of school, we have some, some principals that are out currently, obviously on vacation and what have you. We'll be knocking on doors essentially mid-July if we don't have information from, from schools. Or even going as far as going through and doing it ourselves and asking them to just confirm what's, what's up to date and what's not. Our drop-dead date is the start of school, but I'll be honest, our goal is to get it about the first part of August.
That sounds great. I am sure academic leadership would be happy to help sit on those principles. Sorry. So, and it also just helps principals because the more you can put on the website that you don't have to bother the school secretary about, and it just, the all-in-all is a better experience.
Wholeheartedly agree.
Yeah. So I also wanted to ask, I love the success about the online metrics, but doesn't have to be answered now. But the increase in page views, if we could get a little more deeper dive, like what did you see within there that, you know, are those convert, converting over to the enroll? You know, I'd just like to see some more because if you're almost doubling compared to a year ago, where is that increase specifically? And that could be a Friday update kind of thing.
Okay, so you're asking for on the increased website, if we can dive down into where, where we're seeing that increase?
Yeah, just to get a little more, not too terribly granular, but just where is the, the increase in page views coming from? Or not coming from, but specifically where is it occurring?
Got it. Thank you.
All right, I think we're good. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much.
Dr. Bedell?
All right, we have two items that will be presented to the board and the community to take action on from the Budget Department. Item number one being the FY 2122 Final Budget Amendment Two, which will be presented by Ms. Erin Thompson. And then we would move into FY 2223, I believe, Final Budget Review for Approval Tonight.
Yes.
And then I think Ms. Thompson, you're going to stay with us, luckily or not, for the Board of Directors piece to do the Treasurer's Report, correct? Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Okay. Good evening, Board Chair Hogan, board members. On behalf of Dr. Bedell and administration, we're requesting approval of Budget Amendment Two for FY 22. This is to complete this fiscal year of $330,482,156. And we're all, we're also asking for the approval of the FY 23 Original Budget for $332,663,581. Before I do that, am I not loud enough? Oh, no. I'll switch to that. But I do want to introduce my budget team. Veronica Seraminto, she's the budget manager. Leah Davis, she works with instruction, all the schools. You can stand up. Terry Gilroy, she works with operations. And Beverly Gray, she works with the librarians, all the schools. She's retiring at the 33 years with the district. And, and Deandre Campbell works with all our ESR funds. He keeps track of all the ESR funds and works with the schools. And Leah works with all Title I grants. I just wanted to introduce all the people who do that hard work on this budget process every year. Okay. Thank you guys. Budget Amendment Two, this is the close out the year. We're seeing here, we had an increased revenue of $13,286,127. We increased our expenditures by 8.6 million. And most of that was, we did our student devices at the end, 2.2 million. We did some science equipment, art supplies, PD. We also paid for those teachers subbing as teachers. We included that in this budget. We got our Grow Your Own grant. So our total expenditures were 8.6 for a net of 4.6. We restricted that and put most of that in capital projects to carry over for next year. So our balance going into fund balance was $924,670. Of course, this keeps our fund balance at the 29% with this amendment two, which flows into our next year's budget proposal. These are our timelines. You've seen them. We, we have our same timelines. We met on May 4th for a budget workshop with the board. We had a public hearing on May 11th. We did the extensive budget review on the May 25th Business Meeting, the presentation of the budget. You have the budget book that we provided to you all on June 8th, the entire budget document. And so tonight, we're requesting your approval of the budget. All right, this year, we concentrated on the academic plan that was presented in January, which basically says we're going to do culturally responsive practices, literacy, math, and mental health. And we set aside that 2.4 million in contingency for mental health after we got that additional transportation money. And we did get a plan from Student Support to include that in our budget. We also made sure we stuck to the strategic plan of success in the early years, the whole child, continuous growth, 21st century critical thinkers, and ready for lifelong successes. So we're requesting a budget of $332,663,581. Our fund balance will be 29% after, after the approval of this budget. Here, we're showing our local revenue projection for next year of $325,606. We go through all of our expenditures, which we went through May 24th. But instruction, $143,645,567, which is 43% of the total budget. Our total budget request of $332,663,581 for FY 23. Revenue sources. Of course, our local revenue is our largest portion of revenue from our taxes, Our federal, from all our grants and our ESR funds, of 28% of $92,926,265. And our county of 2% for $6,188,78. Where the money goes. Salaries and benefits are the biggest part of our budget, as we all know. 64% of our budget is for salary and benefits. Our purchase services is 15%, materials and supplies, 8%, capital, 10%, and our debt service currently at 3%. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Questions from the board? Doesn't look like it. So now we go into the Board of Directors Report where we have our... No, we will. It's, it's later. It's in regular business items, right? No, but we've adopted Ms. Thompson as a board member and as our treasurer. Sorry, Manny. And so now she's going to do our Treasurer's Report.
Okay. The Treasurer Report, at this point in time, we are 11 months into the budget. So that's why we brought our final budget of this year. We should be at 91.6% expenditures. As you see here for revenue, we've collected another 2.6 million at the period ending May 20, May 31st. Currently, we're at 99.8% collection on revenue for local, which is way above our budget amount. Our total here, our total is 91.2%. So we're within our budget amount for our revenue. We're doing very well on our collection of our revenue. This is just our budget revenue by source, local, county, state, and federal, which we showed on our budgets, our budget projections. For expenditures, salaries and fringe benefits. Right now, we haven't paid out any of our, any of the supplemental pay that we usually do at the end of the semester for clubs and activities. So that's not at the 91% or anywhere near that. And we also haven't paid out any unused leave. That's for when people leave and we actually pay out, out of this account. Purchase services, they are the, we're not... Purchase services, they are the, we're not trending very well on our purchase services. We're only at 60%. And most of that is in that contingency account you see for 8.3 million that will roll over into next year. Supplies and materials, we're doing pretty good. We're at 87.4% of the budget on supplies and material. Capital is 40%, but most of that rolls over into next year. So, our total budget right now, we're looking at 72%. Again, here's our expenditures, our salaries, benefits, purchase services and supplies, capital and other expenditures. Our investment right now, total investment of $172,751,405. And of course, that makes up some of that reserve that you see, reserve level. Well, we had two securities mature during the month of May. So, our total investment again is $172,751,405, which is very healthy for the district. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I'm guessing there are no questions from the board, but oh, maybe we do have one. Ms. Cortez?
Sorry. After listening to you talk about Budget Amendment Two and then the Treasurer's Report, help us as board members kind of reconcile the Treasurer's Report and the areas that are rolling forward with the Budget Amendment. Are those already reflected in the Budget Amendment?
Yes, but the Budget Amendment is an estimate of the budget. The Treasurer Report is actual expenditures. So, once those expenditures are audited by the auditors, we'll see where we actually end up with the actual amount. So, budget, you know, is always an estimate. We're as we projected for, and that's what we think we're going to end. But actually, after all the invoices are paid and everything out of AP is paid and encumbrance is rolling to next year, and we finish the audit, we'll know for sure what the actual comes out to be.
So, help me think about this in terms of the budget is out here, right, the first time. The First Amendment gets us a little closer to reality. The Second Amendment gets us a little bit closer?
Yes, it gets you much closer to reality.
Okay.
Because we know 11 months of expenditures, and we know that we're underspending in our purchase services. So, we know some of those funds will roll over into the next year's budget, those contingencies. But we're really right. And the auditors will be starting, I think in two weeks. We'll start that whole process with the audit.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thompson. Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Ms. Quinley, who's not expecting this at all. Yeah, this is your last board meeting, right? And, I mean, you've been invaluable to the district. I think I probably speak for everyone here. You haven't just been a finance person. You've helped on the operational side. You've done an incredible job from a government relations perspective, which I'm guessing you didn't anticipate doing when you signed on here. But your testimony in Jefferson City has been a huge part of getting us to the place that we've gotten to now, and your partnership with Barge and Associates. And so, I just know, feel free to jump in, fellow board members, but I just know from my perspective, it's been incredible working with you. I appreciate the contribution you've had to this district. And people don't really see it, because, you know, finance, how does that flow down to educating our kids? But it's absolutely related, right? The more we can sort of focus and become more efficient fiscally, the more money we can put in the classroom. And so, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize you and thank you for that. And I know that you're going to continue to work in some different capacities, continuing to advocate for public education in this state. So, thank you for everything that you've done for the district. Go ahead, Ms. Wolfsey.
Ms. Quinley, you and I have gotten to work together, gosh, is it the last three-plus years on government relations? And I think the one thing that I appreciate, I mean, the hard work, the time that you put into things, my seven o'clock calls. But the thing that I most appreciated about what you brought to the table was your ability, you can take very complex chewy subjects and distill them down into layperson language that people understand and can then make big decisions about. And I appreciate that. I mean, you have, from a legislative standpoint, you have big shoes to fill. And I hope we do you justice when back down in Jeff City. So, I look forward to being able to work with you again.
Ms. Cortez?
So, as the, as the member of the board who's had the privilege of re-establishing a Finance Committee here within KCPS, I just, I do want to extend to you that same sense of translation. And I look forward to Ms. Thompson continuing to take those concepts and help us translate them. I think it's going to be critical that we build on what you've established from a transparency standpoint, if we really think we're going to go to the voters for bigger support. And the, you know, sometimes the conversations are not easy, but they're always frank, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Dr. Jones?
I just want to thank you, Ms. Quinley, for all of that awareness and advocacy work that you've done on behalf of the district and students, public school students statewide. So, thank you so much for that. And it takes a lot of courage, I know, and nerves of steel to do what you've done, you know, this whole time you've been here. So, just thank you so much for that.
All right. Well, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. So, we just wanted to have a, just a really a bit of a check-in as it relates to MBE, hiring a contractor to do some work from a, particularly from a Latinx perspective. So, I don't know, Dr. Collier, if you want to step up to the, oops, sorry, step up to the mic.
Yes. So, the district, we put out an RFP for those services that are really targeted toward our Latinx community. And we sent it out, I think, to 17 vendors. And we've gotten interest from three. No one has formally submitted yet. So, probably by the time we meet again, we'll be able to give you a lot more information around who submitted and then who we selected.
Ms. Cortez?
So, this is news to me. And I'm wondering if we might be able to share that with the board so that those of us who have relationships in the Latinx community and the business community could be marketers.
Absolutely.
Try to get response.
The scope of work, we can certainly share with you all.
That would be great.
We can get that to you all this evening.
All right, thank you. And now we will move on to Ad-Hoc Committee Reports. So, I'm going to start with Government Relations and Ms. Wolfsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, tonight, the Government Relations Committee, which I'll give a little primer first. The Government Relations Committee is a committee of the board, made up of three members, myself, Ms. Cortez, and Mr. Abarca. But also, it is a working committee that works directly with the administration. And so, we have a pretty large group, Dr. Bedell, Dr. Collier, Mr. Thornton, Dr. Holiday Scott, Ms. Pointer. Gosh, I'm probably leaving out somebody. I know Ms. Waichel was on there when she was here. So, we work together. And one of our bigger pieces of work is the legislative priorities for the upcoming year. Typically, we're doing this mid-summer time. But there has been some momentum, thanks to some of the hard work of Ms. Quinley and John Barge and Associates, and then the agreement that was reached within the Senate this last session, and some relationship building that we had with Senator O'Laughlin, that we want to kind of move up the timeline a little bit this year. And so, the Government Relations Committee met in June last week. And we quickly looked at what we typically do when we write the legislative priorities, is look at what we had done in the last session, take into account what had occurred in the session and what we think is going to happen next session, and then begin to revise and tweak them. So, we'd like to bring, and the moving up timeframe is so that we can take advantage of some of this momentum. There was a Senate interim Education Committee appointed or created. And they're going to get to work on some of the things that were discussed in session this summer. And so, we'd like to go ahead and bring forward the draft of the priorities to the full board and the public now. And we'll do some engagement with like District Advisory Committee, and perhaps the teachers and some other constituents. But to get feedback so that we could then vote on adopting the priorities at the July 20th meeting. So, I have asked June to make sure that the 2023 KCPS draft legislative priorities are actually in the agenda under Ad-Hoc Committee so that the public themselves can actually go and look at them. But just to give you a high level at this point, you'll see two priorities that are coming back that are exactly the same. They are around teacher compensation and putting the Kansas City Public Schools, moving us under the Hancock Amendment, if we could. That's a three-part process pretty much. But we want to have those two remain on the priorities. We also have transparency and accountability. We, the one priority we took off was around equity funding, and that's mainly because it got across the finish line this year. But what we did was we took transparency and accountability around educational systems in charter counties. We made that its own point, and we actually expanded a couple of the items underneath there so that parents and taxpayers have the ability to adequately navigate education systems in charter counties by providing full equitable treatment in public education accountability, transparency, flexibility, and resource distribution. So, those are things, I'm going to go into a little more detail here because this is the one we really expanded. That's, you know, asking for the same accreditation ratings for all schools, the same operational requirements. An example would be all of us having the ability to have similar start dates for schools, as well as having all schools include annual reporting of financial information via website, which is best practice, but not required by state statute. And we give examples of what we're asking for there. Advocating for local funding resources to be allocated based on student need for special ed and English language learners. And a lot of that came out of the work that Ms. Quinley did specifically around equity funding and really making sure that wherever those students reside, whether it's within Kansas City Public Schools or charter schools, that the appropriate resources go with them. And then also advocating for efficient school systems overall by requiring viability studies before the expansion of available seats. And the one new one was supporting legislation and funding designed to expand early childhood education across the state of Missouri. But specifically advocating for the expansion in the Missouri Foundation formula. And also asking or advocating that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education provide universal pre-K programming so that there was consistent kindergarten readiness statewide. And the last little tweak, because we used to have a social emotional learning supports and resources for that in our state priorities, but we've made the decision that that probably could move down more appropriately to our local legislative priorities and around ensuring school safety there as well. So, we'll talk about those at another time. But I just wanted to make sure people knew we had specifically thought about those and removed them. So, at this time, there's really no action. I've, all of you should have it in your email at this point. And really, just we'll begin to seek proactively feedback from different groups and board members so we can bring it back for adoption in July.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfsey. Any questions for Ms. Wolfsey? All right, then we'll go over to Ms. Cortez for an update on the Finance Committee.
So, those of you who missed the excitement at 8 o'clock on Wednesday mornings, I'm sorry that you don't have this experience because it's very uplifting. Really, the Finance Committee's work has been focused through the course of the last few months in dialogue with the administration around the budget and the process and how we can more fully engage the community. The use of the Balancing Act program in the Blueprint 2030 is a great model for us to think about how we continue to engage the public in discussions around how we use our resources. And that remains on our agenda going into the next academic year. The other two big topics that will be kind of places for feedback from the committee as the administration brings things, one you'll hear tonight, which is around insurance and helping us to understand the markets and what's happening there. And Ms. Quinley and her team and our outside advisor took some time with the committee to talk through the issues that we face, not just the KCPS, but nationally in the markets. And really, the last is an ongoing project that the board approved, the Contract with Integrity, looking at improvements within our buildings related to airflow and systems and, you know, the funnel that will be necessary to determine what the final projects are versus the much larger list of potential projects. So, again, kudos to Ms. Quinley and her team for engaging in that, us in that dialogue and really just getting some feedback from us about how that dialogue can be engaged with the board.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cortez. Any questions from the board? All right, well, Dr. Bedell will turn it over to you for the regular business items.
All right, we have a number of items to cover tonight, and we'll get right into it. The first one being the renewal of property liability and workers' compensation insurance coverages. One of the items that we spent in that highly engaging Finance Committee meeting discussing. The administration recommends approval of the renewals of the property liability and worker compensation policies, totaling a projected annual premium of $3,474,390, which is an increase of $594,957, or 21%. This increase is largely due to an increase in property values based on a recent valuation determination by the insurance carrier in addition to rate increases for property. Additionally, an increase in deductible for wind and hail claims from 100,000 per occurrence to 1% per building has been added. These policies will need part of the operating budget for next year, which will require an amendment of roughly $400,000. Eric Hage from CBiz, our broker agency, is present if you have any questions for him.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following insurance policies? Property, educator legal liability, primary limit, and excess limit, general liability, automobile, crime, inland marine? Interesting. Employed lawyers liability, workers' compensation totaling $3,474,390. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number two, 2021-2022 Budget Amendment Two. The administration recommends approval of the second and final amendment to the 2021-2022 budget as presented earlier by Ms. Thompson. This amendment will bring the total budgeted expenditures to $330.5 million.
Questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an amendment to the fiscal year 2022 Comprehensive Budget? Moved and seconded, June. Will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number three is the approval of the 2022-2023 Comprehensive Budget. The administration recommends... The administration recommends approval of the 2022-23 budget totaling $332,700,000 in expenditures as presented earlier by Ms. Thompson. The budget is a break-even budget with 29.3% operating fund balances. This budget continues to support schools using our tiered system and implement several pilot projects under Blueprint 2030.
Questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the fiscal year 2023 comprehensive budget?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Right, the next item is one that we're extremely proud of and something that we need to, I was thinking about our communication team, make sure that once this is voted and approved upon, is something that needs to be highlighted as a way to attract future employees. This is the collective bargaining agreement with SEIU. We are recommending the approval of new wage schedules for the 2223 fiscal year with our employee groups recommended by SEIU. That includes child nutrition services, custodial services, and maintenance and trades as attached to the collective bargaining agreement. This year was an economics-only bargaining session. The attached schedules include a commitment to a step for experience as well as improved base rates of pay. This agreement, if approved, will result in all employee groups of KCPS having a beginning rate of pay of fifteen or higher. SEIU ratified this agreement with a one-hundred percent vote on June fifteenth.
Questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the agreed, um, two compensation schedules with the Service Employees International Union Local One for fiscal year 2223?
So moved.
Is there a second? June, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you. Item number five is the 2022-2023 Hogan Preparatory Academy Agreement for Child Nutrition Services. The administration recommends approval of the agreement to provide meal services and program oversight to Hogan Prep for the third year. Child Nutrition Services of KCPS will collect revenues estimated at six hundred thousand and cover expenses of the program from the CNS budget.
Questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the agreement with Hogan? Hogan, not related to me, Preparatory Academy.
Moved, so moved.
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
All right, item number six, the administration is recommending the approval of a three-year agreement with Belfonte for supply and delivery of milk, dairy, and juice products for an annual amount to not exceed 1.1 million based on use. This annual con, annual cost of the contract will be provided for in the Child Nutrition Services budget.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to authorize Contract C-18008 with Belfonte Ice Cream Company?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms., Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you. Item number seven, CC Fresh Produce Company contract. The administration recommends approval of the three-year agreement with CC Fresh Produce, Produce Company for supply and delivery of fresh fruits and vegetables for an annual amount not to exceed three hundred thousand. This contract, the cost will be provided for in the Child Nutrition Services budget.
Any questions? Or is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to authorize the contract renewal, C-22009 with CC Fresh Produce Company?
So moved.
June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones? Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number eight, Sherwood Center First Amendment. The administration recommends approval of the First Amendment to the annual contract with Sherwood Autism System Center, increasing the contract by six hundred thousand to 1.3 million based on final expected expenditures. The services provided are for students with special education needs. The 2021-2022 annual operating budget for special education supports this amendment.
Any questions? Or is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the First Amendment with Sherwood Center?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Item number nine is A-List LLC contract. The administration recommends approval of the contract with A-List LLC for contracted technology staff in our schools. This is for a, this contract is for a one-year term with two one-year renewal options. The annual cost of one million will be available in the 2022-23 Technology Services operating budget.
Any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the agreement with A-List LLC in the amount not to exceed one million dollars?
So moved.
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Item number ten, the administration recommends approval of a contract with the Capital Region Education Council to establish Holiday Montessori as a Montessori Training Center for the 2022-23 year. The three hundred, two thousand cost of the contract and the additional FTE required for the program are included in the 2022-23 operating budget.
Any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the agreement between KCPS and the Capital Region Education Center?
So moved.
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Item number eleven, EBS Healthcare First Amendment. The administration is, recommends the approval of the First Amendment to the current year contract. This amendment increases the contract by six hundred thousand to two million, seven hundred ninety thousand to support staffing services provided to KCPS for special education teachers. The 2021-22 operating budget for special education supports this amendment.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the First Amendment with EBS?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
All right, the next item is Nova Center First Amendment. The administration recommends approval of the First Amendment to the current year contract with the Nova Center. This amendment increases the contract by ninety-eight thousand to one hundred seventy thousand to support services provided to KCPS special education students. The 2021-22 operating budget for special education supports this amendment.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the First Amendment with Nova Center?
So moved.
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The final item is the Niles Home First Amendment. The administration recommends approval of the First Amendment to the current year contract with the Niles Home. This amendment increases the contract by one hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred dollars to four hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred to support services provided to KCPS special education students. The 2021-22 operating budget for special education supports this amendment.
Any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the First Amendment with Niles Home?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. All right, do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. All right, we're getting close. June, will you do a review of the action items from tonight, please?
They come up, I will. There they are. Okay, family engagement. The request was made for, for pre-K. On what is the communication to families for pre-K? And that's for Ms. Garing.
Oh, I'm sorry, June. That is the, what is the communication? How is the communication streamlined to staff?
Sorry, let me do that again. It seems there's conflicting information on what are the processes on internal communications to staff about the enrollment process for pre-K? Okay, that, I have two communications to pre-A, pre-K. One is external and one is internal. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Online metrics, this again is communications. There's a deeper dive on the increase in page views, right? Where is the increase from a year ago? Where is the increase in page views, views coming from?
Yes, mainly the difference, what's the increase attributed to?
Thank you. I have another one on the scope of work, sending the scope of work on the Latino or Latinx project to the board, and that would be in the Friday update. And then I also added one to add legislative priorities draft to the Friday update.